All right, good evening. Welcome everybody here tonight to our April 20th, 2015 work session. A work session is an informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken on work session items tonight. Tonight, there are nine items on the agenda. And public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into the city clerk. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public cards will be accepted. And tonight, proud, our first item, Sudi, if I'll have you, you read it, but just proud to have the Sons of the American Revolution here tonight for this first item and ask them to step forward and, you know, Cogard.
Cogard, okay. I'm Sudi from Clark. To the right pace. Hand salute.
Please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready, two. To the left face. To the left face.
Would you please stay there, Bill, and we'll read our proclamation.
This is a proclamation recognizing Patriots' Day, being presented by Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Thank you. By the rude bridge that arched the spring flood, their flag to April's breeze unfolded, here once the embattled farmer stood and shot and heard the shot around the world. Fired the shot heard round the world. Today, we're here to celebrate Patriots' Day, which was actually yesterday, but in the absence of a public meeting yesterday, we'll read our proclamation today. This is Patriots' Day. Whereas April 19th, 1775, is a momentous date in the founding of our nation, once celebrated with other patriotic holidays. And whereas, in the early hours of that day, Paul Revere, William Dawes, and Dr. Samuel Preska raced through the Massachusetts countryside to warn fellow citizens that British troops were coming to arrest their leaders and seize their stores of munitions. And whereas, answering this alarm, patriots took up arms, congregated on the Village Green in Lexington, and during a confrontation with the British troops, several patriots were killed, thus marking the beginning of the War for American Independence. And whereas, on that same day, determined patriots lay in wait for the advancing British at Concord's North Bridge. And during the intense fighting, they were repulsed, they repulsed the British, who then began their retreat to Boston, with the patriots harassing them all the way. And whereas, news of the shot heard round the world galvanized public opinion in favor the American Revolution, including reluctant Georgians. And whereas, it is appropriate that we recognize the importance of this day in our history and remember the sacrifices endured by many patriots during years of struggle for American independence. Whereas Milton County honored John Milton, a Georgia Continental Officer, whom the British captured at Fort MacIntosh in 1777 and imprisoned at St. Augustine. During the British capture of Savannah in 1778, Milton saved Georgia's public records by taking them to the Carolinas and later to Maryland. He returned the records following the re-establishment of Georgia's government in 1782. Milton County became part of Fulton County in 1931. And whereas, the City of Milton is named for John Milton and is within the county once named for him. Now, therefore, the City of Milton proclaims the 20th day of April as Patriots' Day and encourages our citizens to honor the many patriots for whom Georgia counties and towns are named and pay tribute to all the patriots of the American Revolution, given under his hand and seal with the City of Milton, Georgia, on this 20th day of April, year 2015. Will you all come down, council, and we'll present our proclamations?
proclamation. Thank you, Councilmember Lusk. Sudi, if you'll, are there any public comment items?
No, sir, there's not.
Public comments on this item number two, if you would read the item.
This is discussion of ARZ-15-02, Chapter 64, Article 20, Deerfield Form-Based Code to amend the standards and increase the geographical area to include areas within the Highway 9 North visioning study. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. With your permission, I would propose that we discuss Article 2 as well as Article 4 jointly. And the purpose for that is that we have, after using both of these form-based codes for a couple of years, have found certain areas that we wanted to tweak. And both codes have very similar language, so if we propose changes in one, we really need to propose changes in the other. So we will be talking about both codes in terms of amendments.
You said Article 2 and Article 4. Did you mean Item 2 and Item 4?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes, sorry. Thank you for that correction.
So I will read that into the record discussion of ARZ-15-03, Chapter 64, Article 19, Crab Apple Form-Based Code to amend and add standards within the code. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you very much. In addition to essentially minor language changes in both of those codes, we also, and more importantly, are proposing to amend the Deerfield Code to include the area north of Bethany Bend along Route 9 to reflect the findings from our visioning study that has been undertaken and completed during the last year and a half. So that will be a major amendment and will also be discussed as part of this discussion this evening. So with that, I would like to introduce our consultant to you. We usually have Kay Lebrassico here from the firm of TSW, but tonight, his colleague is here instead to give the presentation, and it is Alex Fietwoseluk. And he will be presenting to you the changes in both of the codes as well as the major amendment to the Deerfield to include the Route 9 North area. So with that, Alex, you have the floor.
Thank you, Kathy. Mayor, council. As Kathy outlined, we just wanted to take this opportunity to go over some of the form-based codes that you have already. As you know, these have been around for a couple of years. We have two SMART codes. The SMART code is a sort of national standard that's then calibrated for local jurisdictions, including your own. The first one that was done by TSW was in 2012. That's the Crab Apple overlay, uh, Form-Based Code, I'm sorry. And then later on, the Deerfield/Highway 9 code was adopted in 2013. So staff and developers have had a couple of years to kind of kick around the Form-Based Code and kind of figure out what's going on. Overall, as Kathy said, things are working fairly well. People are fairly happy, but there are a few small tweaks that we feel can make things work even better. So we've organized this presentation into some of the common revisions that are for both. Those were some of the more sort of administrative in, at points, I guess, changes that we felt would benefit both. And then there are some that are specific to each, again, that are site-specific. And I'll just kind of go through those fairly quickly. One of the first was the block size and connectivity requirements. Basically, it was, there was an oversight in that we didn't include how to handle dead-end streets. Right now, they're limited to, with this, sorry, with this amendment, they would be limited to 150 feet. We also, because of the nature of the existing streets in Milton, we wanted to clarify how block size is calculated. That's a little bit of a technicality. I did want to point out on the presentation, anything that you see that's underlined are suggestions that were made by the Planning Commission. Some of those work. Some of those maybe need a little bit more attention. But one of the things that the Planning Commission suggested was that for these stubouts, as you call it, so if there's, you have a development that backs up against another development that may occur in the future, you have a stubout. Essentially, that is a dead-end street that could then be expanded later. One of the Planning Commission's requests was that you provide curbing at the end of that stubout. So I just wanted to clarify that for you.
So like on that picture that's on, that's on the screen there, that cul-de-sac that's in the left bottom, you'd have a 25 feet or whatever the cross-section of the road is curved and guttered there.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. That was the suggestion from the Planning Commission. The next item is the thoroughfare or the street types. As you probably know, there are several different sections that are in the current, excuse me, code. But we found that some of the developers were just trying to get the minimum, and we felt it was more appropriate to basically set up a series of different approved thoroughfare types. And basically, we have these defined types, and as part of this process, we've also sort of identified some part, adding some parking for guest parking. It amounts to about .3 per unit. And one of the suggestions that was made by the Planning Commission, again, underlined, is that there may be a situation where guest parking may be allowed in parking lots versus parking on the street, which all the thoroughfares, you will see the diagram in just a second here, but all the thoroughfares include on-street parking to handle some of that guest parking. And here's the diagram. You can see there's two separate, there's actually four separate streets on here that are represented two per page. That's two pages there. And basically, that just goes through the dimensions and what's located on each. Again, trying to be very specific so no one's trying to weasel around getting the minimum requirements for these streets. Next is bike facilities. One of the things that staff had uncovered is that we'd really like to make sure that the Milton Trail Plan and the good work that was done with that is incorporated appropriately, so it's incorporated by reference. And there's some flexibility in terms of how staff can, can handle those requirements with regards to the Form-Based Code. The next item is the, the public frontages, sort of the sidewalks, if you will. And essentially, the current code requires that regardless of what's out there, if you develop a site, you would need to build from scratch to meet our requirements to the letter. Basically, we, we added some flexibility there so that if staff decides that what's there is adequate for, to meet the, the intent of the code, then essentially could, could be adopted in without having to redo everything. Next had to do with civic spaces. In terms of parks, this is especially pertinent to smaller or pocket parks. We had a minimum width of 60 feet, which really is the only way to make these sorts of parks work. Larger parks, I believe those over eight acres inside would be exempt. So if there's a condition where there's a small park that has to narrow down, that wouldn't apply. It just comes to these smaller parks. So again, we don't get developers who are trying to tighten a little bit too much, they're providing a park that's not really much of a park. The other thing that we included in both was the common mail facilities, as you are all probably aware. New USPS proper, uh, policy requires these to be included, and so we wanted to just make that part of the code. As far as the code itself, we updated the height table just to show very clearly the building height and number of stories for each of the different zones. And last, this is, I'm sure, going to be very helpful for people who read the code with, with their spectacles on, that the, we changed some of the, this, the terms. A lot of, as I mentioned in the beginning, this was an adoption, sorry, an adaptation of the SMART code, which has several sort of standard definitions. We kind of tailored it a little bit more to sort of, sort of, City of Milton terms and regulations, just to make sure that everything was matching up just so. And with that, if there aren't any further questions, I was going to go on to Crab Apple revisions.
Any questions so far for Alex?
Just had a question about the 150 feet dead-end streets. So that would be any new construction, new developments? You're saying, no, you want no more than 150 feet?
Yeah.
For a dead-end street?
That's correct.
That's not going to impact if I, if there's already an existing subdivision or you have any changes, it's not going to touch that?
And that's essentially based on fire code, right? For fire safety, you don't want anything longer than 150 feet.
Anybody else? Questions so far? Okay, Alex, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Onto Crab Apple specific. The first is there are two new uses that we've added to the code, basically to allow some what we're calling village-scale multifamily. Those two uses are loft apartments, which have to be located over a retail or office function. So they're a mixed use always. And the second is the neighborhood apartments, and those are limited to 30 units per development. So you couldn't get any more than 30, you couldn't get any more than 30 units in a given development. And that is not mixed use. And as far as all other apartments, the same use standards still apply. As far as stormwater facilities, we folded back in some of the requirements into Crab Apple that, that came up in Deerfield. And one of the, the bigger requirements is that facilities must be improved, basically so they look nice for aesthetics, or they're placed out of view. One other piece that came up was about the pedestrian light standards. I know that as part of the City Hall planning, certain lights, poles and fixtures were chosen, the Washington-type of pole, which is, I guess, you can find on George Powers' website, and the Granville-type of fixture, part on the top. And of course, we can't require that a given model of anything is, is required. That's why it's, there's that statement that the Community Development Director can choose something that is sufficiently close. And that's basically all the Crab Apple-specific changes. Were there any questions about those?
Questions on?
Just a question on, on the lighting. I, I saw a couple of emails that came out where people were questioning about the night light and the impact of those type of lights on the night light. Can you comment on that as far as upward lighting versus just?
I can tell, I can't, I don't know a whole lot about the specific fixture. Looking at the website and looking at the form of the fixture, a lot of these antique-style fixtures do not, are not dark-skY friendly, as you said. The current requirements before this amendment are that they are sort of dark-sky friendly, but I don't know if, Kathy, if you had any additional conversation that you wanted to?
The intent was, sir, to make the lighting in the area consistent, of a same consistent look. And we've chosen that with, I believe Carter with the sidewalk along Crab Apple from all the way. So we've set the pattern, and we just wanted to memorialize it, so to speak, so.
And I would imagine those type lights being sort of historical or more just glowing, glowing lights versus spotlight-type things.
Nobody else? All right.
Okay. Onto Deerfield. So as Kathy mentioned in the beginning, one of the big changes to this area is the Route 9 Vision Study, Route 9 North, I'm sorry. And as you know, that extends basically to Forsyth County line and has a very specific, detailed vision. As part of that, what, what we developed was this additional category. We had T4 Open and T4 on its, T4 Limited. And then this third category is in T4, is T4 Permissive. So it's a little bit between T4 Open and T4 Limited. And basically, what we've done is we've adopted the commercial uses because there was a fairly good fit. We've adopted the commercial uses so that they're more, sorry, less than T4 Open, which as you know, is fairly permissive, but T4 is more restrictive. And so it's kind of in that happy medium. And it just so happens to coincide with the, the plan that was, that was already adopted. So we, we were very careful about that particular aspect. There, in addition to that, there are some specific zoning requirements that were part of the five-acre road zone, having to do with commercial density and also landscape requirements. So those were folded in, specific to those areas. And the last piece has to do with radio and television. And one thing that I did want to point out with this is, because we think this might be an issue, is per the Planning Commission, they would like to completely screen for the entire height all radio and television stations. And our issue is, I think originally, the, we proposed 10 feet, something to that effect. Bringing a fence or any screening up 50, 100 feet seems difficult to do. So I would ask that you, you look at that again and kind of think about how that might work exactly. And then the last piece was the large-format retailers. Basically, we're incorporating the, the citywide standards and, and making sure that the Form-Based Code is, is the one that governs if there are any conflicts. And with that, I have concluded my presentation, so I'm open to any further questions there, maybe.
Okay. Bill?
So we're talking about, in your last slide there, TV and radio and television stations. Stations synonymous with towers? Are you talking about towers?
I believe it includes both.
Yeah, it would include all the accessories, towers, the, the, the large dishes, you know, any of the accoutrements that relate to that.
And I guess that you'd have to figure out how that would, could even be done, if possible, you know, put on the sides of the tower if you were screening, it would probably negate the, the use of the tower and, the tower would have to get taller and.
I think you'd have to be careful that the screening wasn't more inclusive than the tower itself.
That's what I'm saying. You end up going with so much screening.
You might get a tourist attraction of a very large screen.
So how is this going to be further vetted out, then, this particular issue?
Well, my understanding is that these are recommendations made by the Planning Commission. It is up to the council to decide whether or not to adopt those particular recommendations. So did I represent that incorrectly?
All right, but if you'd like us to do some more research between this meeting and next meeting in terms of what we could do to address the concern of the Planning Commission. They obviously felt that, that they wanted this particular use to be screened as much as possible. And we could talk to the arborist and find out what we could come back with, with a possible plan. I'm not sure we can get to the point of, of getting to the height exactly, but at least we can get back with something that would be quick, quick-growing and dense and whatnot.
Well, we're talking, you're talking about a 100-foot tower out there. Certainly, we don't have any
No.
... known species in this area of the country that would screen a tower.
Right, right. But we can look at what we could practically put up there that would be dense-growing and quick-growing, dense and quick-growing.
What if we didn't allow towers? I mean, I mean, you know, I mean, and just, just nip that in the bud. Is that possible?
Well, we're talking about.
There are.
I think we'd better.
There's certain things we can't.
It's difficult to, I mean, you can't completely prevent the companies from providing service. There's a federal, federal laws are pretty strict on that. They present evidence that they need to fill a gap or whatever.
Kathy, could we have some kind of a review process for those towers with regards to giving instruction on a case-by-case basis in front of the Planning, you know, either Planning Commission or the council or whatever? I'm just thinking, how could we give advice on something we're not necessarily sure what it would be, but maybe we can regulate a process where they come before us and we can give direction? Is that possible?
Yeah, Robin, can we make this a use permit?
That's what I'm, I'm looking up right now, the use.
Yeah. Because that would be the ideal thing to do. Then it would be on a case-by-case.
Right. Right.
It's a use permit right now. It's proposed as a use permit, so if there was to be a radio station to come or a television station, they'd have to come through a use permit, which would have your review. So, we have to create, I believe we have to create it if you pursue this, to have a use permit, because we don't have a use permit for this specific use yet.
For this zone, for the Form-Based Code, we don't have a use permit in this, right?
Right, it was just, it's a new item that we would have to create a use permit.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
So it would be before you if anybody, a television station, radio station came.
There you go.
Take care.
I think, I'd like to go over what were the other things that the Planning Commission, because I know they went over this in detail, the other suggestions or changes that they had that we may need to vet up here, you know, specific changes.
Go ahead. I believe I have it outlined in the memo.
Right.
Let's see. It says on the last, page three, "The following items were discussed by the Planning Commission," and they're highlighted in yellow throughout your book of the form. "The stub-out streets at 150 feet in length or less shall terminate a curb design," so Alex discussed that. "Incorporate the Milton Trail Plan and provide on- or off-street bicycle facilities not specified, and the regulating plans may be provided." "When on-street facilities are provided within new thoroughfares, the width of the thoroughfare in Table Four shall be increased." And staff notes that we do not support the second part of the amendment based on the fact that newly-developed subdivision streets would be increasing width unnecessarily. In addition, the both Form-Based Codes and the Milton Trail Plan provide future bicycle multipurpose trails. The next item is "The requirements of the City of Alpharetta along Windward Parkway will not apply. Furthermore, the City of Milton may waive these requirements for any portion in the City of Milton when unified and safe pedestrian facilities are provided." Staff does support this amendment. And then, lastly, "Required visitor parking may either be provided off-street in a common parking lot, anywhere on the site or on-street within 300 feet of the intended use as measured along the direct improved pedestrian route from the door of the building to the parking space." Staff does support these amendments, although there was some discussion of having a separate parking lot area, which we weren't quite as in support of, but we wanted to make sure there was enough on-street parking to be provided. And so those are all the items that the Planning Commission suggested during their deliberation.
I'm not sure I even understand what number three. What are the requirements of the City of Alpharetta along Windward Parkway?
If you want to, Carter, oh, I'm sorry. While he's finishing it, basically, the right-of-way of Windward actually belongs to the City of Alpharetta, so it's hard to tell, you know, developers on Windward, you have to do X per R code versus when actually Alpharetta has the right-of-way, so...
Perfect.
And that's all the way up and down Windward? It's all Alpharetta's?
That's correct.
Anybody else? Any questions? Just a second here. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Alice. So, if you...do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay, can we call the next item?
Next item is Discussion of RZ-15-05, Chapter 64, Article 17, Development Standards to Create Standards and Penalties for the Request of Demolition Permits Within the City of Milton. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, this is proposed to create for the DRB Chief, as we like to refer to it, for the applications for review that they have before them for demolition permits. Currently, they review requests for demolitions, but they do not have the ability to say no. So, we felt that, and this was at their request, as well as the Planning Commission, they did request that we put something together that would allow for a review process with criteria that could be used for them to judge the relevance of a demolition permit. What we did is, we took, as the basis for the criteria, we took the criteria that an HPC, Historic Preservation Commission, would use when they would have considerations in front of them for demolition permits. We felt that it was a very inclusive list. And I will note that the Planning Commission, when they review this, felt that we should add an additional criteria, which is listed as A and it's outlined in yellow, which is that, to ask the question is whether the building or structure is listed on the Georgia National, Georgia's Natural Archaeological and Historic Resources Geographic Information System. And this essentially is a list that was done in approximately 1998 that listed all and identified all of the historic buildings and structures within the city. Now, some of those have been demolished subsequent to that, but it is still a list that exists, and it is a good base that can be used by the DRB when they're looking at a demolition permit to see if it's on that list. And so, again, it's an additional criteria for use. But we felt that, since the HPC currently has only listed two structures for local designation, those being the Chadwick Store and the Bird House, that those are the two that the HPC currently has purview over in terms of reviewing any proposed demolition permits. Anything else would be under the purview of the DRB. So we wanted to strengthen the ability, the review authority of the DRB, and we came up with a set of criteria, and as well as gave them the ability to say no.
Bill?
What legal standing do we have to enforce that ordinance?
I'll have our city attorney respond to that.
Part of your police powers, if you, if the city council declared an interest of the public?
Okay, what...
As long as we are setting out guidelines for them to follow.
Okay, are there penalties attached with that, then? In the past eight years, almost nine years, several of those structures have disappeared in the dark of night, and I would suspect that that's going to happen even again down the road. Are there any penalties for violating it?
Well, yes, it then becomes a, they would receive a citation from our code enforcement, and they would have to go to the court and explain what happened, and they could be eligible for a fine.
So there's a full, on page two is a full page of penalty provisions. Oh, okay, thanks. So we have a lot of, a lot of items to be covered. So not only a penalty, but also potential development for the future would be on Section 64-2426(c), restrictions on future development, so not only fines and all those items that Kathy talked about, but it says if a property is demolished or relocated without a certificate of appropriateness from the DRB, or in event that the plans are changed for the property from which the resource was removed without approval by the DRB, then the following restrictions, in addition to any other penalties or remedies set forth in this article, shall be applicable to a site where the structure or property was formally located. One, no building or other permits will be issued for construction on the site with the exception of a permit to restore such structure or property after obtaining a certificate of appropriateness for a period of five years after the date of such demolition or removal. Two, no permit shall be issued by the city for any curb cuts on the site for a period of five years from and after the date of such demolition or removal. Three, no parking lot for vehicles shall be operated, whether for remo...remo...I don't know how to say that.
Remoeration.
Or not on the site for the period of five years from and after the date of such demolition report and removal. The owner of the site shall maintain the site in a clean and orderly state and shall properly maintain all existing trees and landscaping. The following item was added by the Planning Commission's suggestion. If the Design Review Board determines that after removal of the structure, new vegetation or landscaping is required, said landscape plan, including type and size of landscaping, shall be approved by the city arborist. So there's a lot of, you know, penalties if it happens, not just monetarily, but for future development.
If the self-owner of a structure can prove that the structure needs to be condemned, we wouldn't be able to prevent him from doing it, and we really couldn't enforce the code then if it was able to be condemned.
Well, clearly, the chief building official would have to weigh in on that to determine whether or not it was eligible for condemnation. He would have to sign off.
So that would supersede any decision by the DRB?
Well, it could be part of it, or the DRB could ask that the building be upgraded so as that determination goes away in terms of the condemnation.
No, there's a couple of barns, a couple on Hopewell Road, that, in my opinion, I think they ought to be torn down, but I think they may even present a public hazard, a safety hazard there. I guess part of the question is, too, have we reviewed all of these structures within the city recently? Do we know how many on that list exist and whether it's practical to preserve them or maintain them? Do we know whether or not they need to be brought within in safety standards to where they're not collapsing on something?
Well, we haven't reviewed the list in terms of looking at the structural soundness or whether or not they've already been demolished. I mean, we clearly, we would pick, and case-by-case, we would pick them up if a demolition permit came in. It would be part of the staff report. We would go out and do an assessment. We would talk to the chief building official, and we would give a recommendation as to whether or not we thought it was validity in demolishing it, or maybe it could be reconstructed. So that would happen on a case-by-case. But in terms of the overall list, have we gone out and assessed that overall list recently? And the answer is no.
Do you know offhand how many are on the list?
Oh, on the master list, I don't know at this point.
It was over 100, I believe, and then, but many have been demolished over the years, and we've sort of crossed them off, but it's been an informal cross-off, but we have not formally gone out and done a survey of all the buildings.
I know they say ignorance of the law is no excuse, but I wonder how many people out there that would take it in their own hands if they felt that their structure, like this one barn that I'm citing up on Hopewell Road, is really a hazard, and it needs to be torn down, and they'll take it upon themselves to do that. Just a question.
Kathy, is it possible to get an updated list where we get the buildings that clearly are not there that have been removed? Can we, the staff, update that for us?
Sure.
We have a current listing, we kind of know, and actually maybe do a drive-by to make sure that they're still there?
Absolutely.
Anybody else? Any questions? Okay, or Matt?
Just to clarify on this, are we basically saying in this that we want to, anybody that needs to demolish a building, that if we deem it historical, that we won't let them do it? Is that basically what we're trying to say?
No, just that that's one of the criteria that will be used, but anyone who wants, who applies for a demolition permit, needs to get the approval of the Design Review Board. And one of the criteria that the Design Review Board will use in determining whether or not a particular structure or building should be demolished is whether it's on this historical list. That's just one of the criteria.
I got you.
I guess that begs the question, then. Do the property owners of each one of these structures understand that point, that if they do want to demolish it, that they do need a demolition permit?
Probably need to let them know that.
Yeah, we do get people in to, you know, for demolition permits, but we can certainly, especially the people on the list, the owners of the buildings on the list, we can certainly notify them of that.
Yeah, to Bill's point, maybe it's good that we actually are proactive. Once you certify and you let people know that their building was designated, so they understand the requirements.
Okay.
Nobody else?
Mr. Mayor, do we skip item three? I just want to...
We discussed it. We just didn't read the...
We said two and four.
We did two through four, did we do?
We did discuss it.
No, we actually didn't.
So we did two and four.
Sorry. We did two and four, but item three is a separate item suiting.
If you want to call item number three.
Discussion of RZ-1504, Chapter 64, Article 7, Division 5, State Route 9 Overlay District to amend the State Route 9 Overlay District map.
Yes, thank you. This is just a simple math, I mean, map amendment. Currently, we have in place the Route 9 overlay by approving the Form-Based Code that will extend up Route 9 all the way to Forsyth County line. We will be overlaying over an overlay, in essence. And so what we need to do is to subtract out the amended Deerfield area from the existing Route 9 overlay. So the purple area is the area that will be subtracted out of the current, no, I'm sorry, it's the reverse. The purple area is what will be left of the Route 9 overlay district once we've subtracted out the Form-Based Code.
And Sue, do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
All right. Any questions?
I just want, just a question. So if I look at this, the purple is what's left of the Highway 9 overlay...
Correct.
And then we look at the Form-Based, some of the yellow, that's along Highway 9.
That is correct.
While it's under the Form-Based Code.
Righto, yes, correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Kathy.
I guess the only question I would have on the map is, you know, obviously we have the Route 9, but it seems like some separation, obviously, from the purple on the left versus the purple on the right, and so as a, I'd just like to think about that for a second, if that makes sense in the future, not necessarily saying we can't do it now, but just...
Not sure I follow that.
Well, it seems like there's different zoning in between, I guess that, the two areas, one in the middle of North Park and the other there on Cogburn, I guess that's just south of North, that Alpharetta Island, if you will.
That's a school of property.
That's a school of property.
The school on the park.
School of property right there.
St. Francis as well.
St. Francis right there.
So that's why that's...
And they fit under that ordinance overlay.
Right, and actually, that's really the way that the Highway 9 Overlay District runs. It really only applies to multifamily, townhomes, and commercial, so it would apply to a lot of those, St. Francis. We, you know, they've been doing a lot of improvements, so it's nice to have that. But much of the other area is really mostly single-family, as you can see, so there's really not a lot to apply it to that's left over.
Gotcha. Okay, I'm good. I'm verifying.
All right, city?
Rick, do you have a question?
I just want, just a question. So, if I look at this, the purple is what's left of the Highway 9 overlay.
Correct.
And then, we look at the Form Base, some of the yellow, that's along Highway 9.
That is correct.
While it's under the Form Base Code.
Righto. Yes, correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Karen.
I guess the only question I would have on the map is, you know, obviously, we have the Route 9, but it seems like some separation, obviously, from the purple on the left versus the purple on the right. And so, as a, I'd just just like to think about that for a second, if that makes sense in the future, not necessarily saying we can't do it now, but just...
Not sure I follow that.
Well, it seems like there's different zoning in between, I guess, that, the two areas, one in the middle of North Park and the other there on Cogburn, I guess, that's just south of North, that Alpharetta Island, if you will.
That's a school of property.
Oh, I got you.
The school on the park.
School property right there.
St. Francis as well.
St. Francis, right there.
So, that's why that's...
And they fit under that ordinance overlay.
Right, and actually, that's really the way that the Highway 9 overlay district runs. It really only applies to multifamily, townhomes, and commercial. So, it would apply to a lot of those, St. Francis. We, you know, they've been doing a lot of improvements, so it's nice to have that. But much of the other area, it's really mostly single family, as you can see. So, there's really not a lot to apply it to that's left over.
Gotcha. Okay, I'm good. Let's verify.
All right, Cindy?
Our next item is discussion of RZ 15-06, Chapter 64-1609, Swimming Pool, Private to Amend Standards for Neighborhood Swimming Pools. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an observation from the staff that we were getting a lot of requests that went onto the BZA from subdivisions that when it came to their swimming, for the neighborhood swimming pool in the subdivision, not the individual pool, but the neighborhood pool, that they were asking for a reduction in the setback. So, we felt that we were, because of the number of requests that we got, we thought that we should really look at changing our setback requirement, that perhaps it was too onerous. So, what we came up with was to change the development standard from a required 100-foot setback to one of 35 feet. And that 35 feet would include a 25-foot undisturbed buffer and a 10-foot improvement setback. And also, to add to that, we felt that neighborhood pools should be located within the interior of the subdivision and not visible from the exterior street where the subdivision is located. And we thought that by requiring this change to the standard, that it would help ensure the rural view shed to be preserved. Now, I will say that the Planning Commission at its March 25 meeting recommended that the proposed amendments not be approved, and therefore, everything should remain the same. This was based on their opinion that the 100-foot setback should be preserved to protect the adjacent property owners from noise, light, and general activity related to a neighborhood swimming pool. In addition, the Planning Commission believed that placing the neighborhood swimming pools within the subdivision contribute, by, within the back of the subdivision is what they mean, contributes to more crime and vandalism of the amenity area since it would not be visible to the general public.
Joe?
So, Kathy, do we have any idea how many pools that are, you know, part of the shared amenity for our subdivisions would be not in compliance with this if we pass this ordinance? And the reason I ask that question is because I think what happens is if they were to try to do something in terms of upgrading their amenities or changing their amenities in any way, we'd probably hold them to making sure that what passed before, you know, came into compliance today. At least that's, you know, we had a little bit of a history with this at Crooked Creek, so I just want to make sure that we're not creating some kind of situation.
Yeah, Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, but would the existing ones be grandfathered in, turned the old...
Yeah, I mean, they would, the existing would be grandfathered in, but you're saying if they redeveloped their amenity area, then I would...
I mean, they, because they won't have a choice. The amenities, where they are is where they are.
That's right.
They're not going to be able to relocate them.
That's right. No, no, they would be grandfathered in.
Okay.
This is for, just for the new ones.
All right.
In terms of where do you want the new amenity areas? We've heard, we've had arguments on both sides that if it's in the front, it's, you know, it's not, it looks, it doesn't lend itself to the rural view shed look.
I know, I know it sounds, you know, straightforward, makes perfect sense, but I'm just telling you, when we were doing that for Crooked Creek, they were trying to get all kinds of setbacks and things added into the amenities area, and it really, it created a difficult situation for a little while there until we got it all squared away. So, okay.
Just as a point of clarification, the concept of grandfathering really applies when you add more onerous conditions or regulations to a particular situation. In this case, it's my understanding, you know, what we're doing is lowering the, or making a little bit more lax the restrictions. So, I don't know that grandfathering of a particular set of provisions is an appropriate term. Now, if there are zoning conditions on a particular parcel, if that's the situation you're concerned with, those would not go away with the adoption of any regulations. So, an existing pool, neighborhood pool, that was constructed according to the previous regulations, as long as that was the only applicable regulation, there weren't zoning, any other zoning conditions attached to it, they could theoretically go with the new standards, as long as it was just based on code requirements.
Yeah, my concern is this. We have a subdivision. Their amenities are located up front where they are, okay? They demolished their amenities because they want to rebuild. Now, they're trying to get plans approved for the new amenities, and all of a sudden, the new amenities don't fit in what the ordinances now state. And so, all of a sudden, they have this difficulty in putting back at a minimum of what they had before because the change in ordinance has made it more difficult or made it impossible.
My understanding is that we were increasing their ability by reducing the setback.
Yeah, but there's one point, what he's speaking to is the location of it. You can't physically change the location of an amenity area, so that's his question, is would they have to get a variance for that, for that particular condition?
Because at that point in time, there's probably nowhere else to put them, because everything else has been developed.
Subs build out.
So, would you need a variance to have, have the location remain up front?
To word it differently, the grandfathering needs to include the location and not just the amenity itself, because if they were to demolish the amenity and want to rebuild, all of a sudden, well, they don't have an amenity.
And that could create a problem insofar as the grandfathering is a specific provision that this council has adopted, part of the zoning ordinance, which, and I don't have it in front of you, will typically say you cannot change, expand the use which is grandfathered. And if you demolish it, I mean, that's effective, I mean, basically, you're saying, if you get rid of what you're allowed to do, even though the rules say you can't, that, at that point in time, then you have to come into compliance. So, I think that would, in fact, actually not become a grandfathered if you completely destroy it.
Right. So, I would just say that we put some kind of provision in there.
We'd need to address the existing ones. I clearly understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Karen?
Well, we could, I mean, do you agree with that concept in general of hiding it behind a view shed? Because if you, you know, that would solve the problem one way or the other.
Well, that's a different question, isn't it? I think in general, I agree with it, although I would say that there is some, depending on the way it's done, I think it could be appealing to have that stuff located, you know, in view, but not in all cases. There's a lot of extenuating circumstances surrounding that question. So...
Karen?
It's my understanding, this has come about because of the number of variance requests that we are seeing. What exactly are the variance requests? Are they to go from the 100 feet to 35 feet? Or is there some kind of happy medium, you know, medium? If it's a person moving into a, to a new home and they choose to live 35 feet from the pool, that's one thing. If you're an existing homeowner and there's somebody coming in and building a pool 35 feet from your house, to me, that's a very different situation. So, I wasn't sure what, what is the circumstances that are, have brought this before us.
I think the circumstances, for example, I can think off the top of my head, was the Highlands up on Freemanville, the Sharp Residential. The original plans did not have an amenity area, and so, they took one of the lots within the subdivision while it was being developed before anybody moved in.
Right.
The lot was very small for amenity area, so they needed to reduce their setbacks dramatically to fit a pool and a, and a small cabana in there. And so, no, there wasn't anybody living around it, but it was a large reduction than the 100-foot. Also, I believe that Blue Valley got another variance for setbacks as well. So, most of the variances, or all of the variances have been pre-construction before the houses have been there, but we've just seen this consistency of a request of going from 100-foot down to 25 feet, 35 feet, fairly significant amount.
And is it 35 feet from the...
The property line of the amenity area.
Okay, so it's not from the pool water, it's actually from the...
No, it's from the property line of the amenity area.
To me, like I said, I think it's a very different situation when you're building the amenity package and then people are choosing to live next door to it as opposed to being there and suddenly the package coming next door to you.
Right.
And I don't know if there's a way to, to word that in the ordinance or not, but I just...
Yeah, you're talking about new developments as opposed to retrofitted pools in existing neighborhoods is, I think, your distinction.
Right.
Okay, we'll work on that to make, see if we can legally make that. Yeah, we can report back.
Bill?
Can't we pick this up during the review process? Can we anticipate it during the review process?
Well, we do review it during the LDP when they position in their, their amenity area, but they're usually coming to us and they want to do the least amount of setback because it means more room for more lots. So, I mean, even if we said pretty please, can you give additional amount there, unless we have a code that requires it, then they're not going to do it. So, whether it's 35 feet or 100 feet, whatever you all decide it should be.
Well, wouldn't it, would, that appears to be an alternative then, is to write the code that requires it.
And we do have it, and right now, it's 100 feet, and we have multiple, multiple, many people or developers coming in for variances to reduce the 100-foot for new development. And usually, it's, really hasn't been anything retrofitted, it's really been new developments that have come through.
And they've gone to the BZA and they've been approved.
Right.
And so, we felt, well, is this something that we should just be cognizant of and just change our code to sort of match the need? Not, that was the intent.
To Karen's point, would this, should be worded so this is for new, you know, it's typically for new.
Right.
Facilities, unless you had an existing neighborhood that had an amenity area carved out but hadn't been done yet, but, you know, that would probably affect the council's decision on that if, you know, again, if it felt like you wanted to make that a smaller number than 100 feet so that it wasn't coming in for branches all the time. But again, to Karen's point, you'd hate for somebody that didn't expect it to have it changed on them, but if, if you move into a new, new development and that's where the pool is and all that, and you buy your house, you can't really complain about it then.
Well, do you think if we, if this was at 50 feet rather than 100 feet, or 60 feet rather than 100 feet, people would just learn to live with it rather than coming in and getting the variances? But since it's 100 feet, they say, well, if I'm going to get a variance, I might as well get the most I can get?
I spoke to Angela, who does, the other planner who does all the variances, and we, I asked her that. I said, what is, you know, when you have a developer coming in, what are they actually asking for? And they said 25, 35 feet. I mean, I think what they're trying to do is, you know, put as much, many houses in the development, and if it means they can have more wiggle room to have less of a setback, that's what they're going to push for, and that's what they're going to ask for. So, I don't, I guess, the answer to your question is, I'm not sure that 50 feet is going to eliminate any of the variances, because really, the variances have been 25, 35 feet from 100.
And they've been granted that significant of a variance without a hardship? What is their hardship?
It's no hardship. What are some neighboring communities?
They want more lots, I don't know. I'm sorry?
What are some neighboring communities that have similar type of neighborhoods?
I'd have, we'd have to do some research on that. I don't know off the top of my head.
But I think that, you know, to the point of it being 100 feet and folks coming in at 25 and 35, if you change it to 35, you'd probably get people coming in at 10 or 25. So, you know, I think maybe that's a, an issue to explore, say, brought up to 50 feet, you know, maybe that would encompass, you know, some of the developments that are coming in, but it's not just a giving away of, you know, making it totally, totally opposite of what the intent originally was. But again, that's, that'll let the council, if, it sounds like if it stays at 100, there'll just, there'll be a lot of variances. 35 is proposed, but again, that, that may just let everybody in, and then it may open it up to people asking for more.
And could you just, I don't know, Karen asked this, but the 100 feet or 35 feet is from property line of the amenity lot, correct?
Right.
To, to what?
No, to the adjacent...
Structure or...
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's pools, pool equipment, and decks must be located at least 100 feet from all adjoining interior property lines. So, I'm sorry, that was my mistake.
So, it's not the property line of the amenity, it's the equipment.
So, in theory, the lot size, if your pool, deck, and all that encompass 50 feet, then, then your, your frontage, if you will, of that lot would be 250 feet wide?
Correct. Well, I'm sorry, it's from the pool equipment, it's not from the property, yes.
Oh, so it's from the property line, interior, you're going that way.
That was my mistake.
Basically, a setback for the pool equipment, correct?
Right, exactly.
But yeah, but if your, but if your pool and equipment was 50 feet from left to right, but you have 100 feet coming in this way and 100 feet coming in that way, so it's 250 feet.
If there are property lines and not, I mean, it depends on what side.
Interior, it's all interior. I mean, if it's in the middle, so it'd have to be 150 feet, 100 feet in, on either, all four sides. So, that's a pretty big lot.
That's if you're going with 100 feet, correct?
Well, but that's what it is right now.
Which is what it is now. 35 feet's pretty tight.
Yeah, 35, and then it says here, 25-foot, undisturbed, and then 10-foot improvement.
Well, but that's interior. It's not in addition. That would be within that 35 feet would...
Would be the 25 and the 10, and that comes up with your 35. I guess the concern I've got is, and maybe that's what we're talking about, is when, when the variance becomes the norm, then we really don't have a rule if we're, if we're making variances to, to what the rule is every time. Kathy, question on here, I see that you were saying staff tying into the, I guess, looking at the ordinance and what we're hearing from the community about, about the rural view shed.
Mm-hmm.
So, when this went before, when you went before the planning commission, you'd said you wanted to have the pool and the amenities so that they were interior, not necessarily the back of the subdivision, but where they were not visible from the road.
Right.
So, again, we're preserving the rural view shed. And are you saying that the planning commission said that they didn't want to have that?
Correct, that they prefer to having them up front.
But you're not saying that it can't be up front. You're just saying it could be up front, but just not visible, is what your recommendation was. Is that correct, or...
Right, but I think the planning commission's point was, they like the idea that if the amenity areas along the main road, that there's always that bit of safety, there's always people going, passing by and being able to kind of, you know, observe what's going on versus, so I don't even know if they would have been satisfied with a 25-foot buffer set aside, or, you know, that it was just not seen from, they want to be able to see it from the road so that there's extra precautionary.
But see, that, to me, that seems contrary to what we're hearing as far as everybody's saying they want to have more rural view as you drive by. They don't want to see homes, they don't want to see...
Right.
I understand having it at the front of the subdivision so that you can, in fact, as people come in, you can see it, but you can't, I don't know how you accomplish both. If you make the pool and the amenities so that they're visible from the road, how are you preserving the rural view shed and what people are saying they want?
But Rick, if, if you don't, in other words, what's going to go there if the amenities aren't there? What's going to go there? Homes. I mean, it's not like they're going to leave it blank.
Well, but that's, that, I think, is where we've got the next 60 days, talking through conservation subdivision and some of the other things that we're looking at as far as how, how that's all going to work out. Today, you're right, if it's AG1 and it's left alone, you're absolutely correct, but if we're looking at something different for the way we're going to develop or allow subdivisions to be developed, I would think you, you wouldn't want to have that amenity. And maybe we look at this when we're going through the whole ordinance changes that we're considering with the conservation subdivision, some other things.
I can explain a little bit about where that, where that came from. Mark Binner's my guy in the planning commission, and in our pool within Sable Point, which is not a gated community, but we've had, you know, vandalism issues there just about every year since we've been there, and it's been a pain in the neck on that end. And of course, we have a pool that's deep inside, very difficult for everybody to just kind of watch it. Now, part of that is the HOAs and the community's responsibility to make sure that that doesn't happen, which I get that, so it shouldn't be the rest of the community's responsibility to police a, a pool area. But I do think that if vandalism is a concern or safety is a concern of the residents, at least, the location of it should be placed into consideration. And I think we might be, you know, if there was, if the pools were on an exterior of a subdivision or near a main road, you can do some kind of lighting or planning or whatever, that might be able to make it attractive, but that was the thought process as to why that came out, given that.
Yeah, I guess my, my only point was, and we're probably premature in looking at this, until we get through the whole, what are we going to come until we get through the whole, what are we going to come up with changes and how we're going to allow development of subdivisions, larger subdivisions, I would think when they say that they, that they want it within view of the street, I think that goes contrary to what we're talking about when we're looking at conservation and green space and how do we make it so that you don't see, you kind of see what you, you see today? That was the point I was trying to make.
Karen?
I, I can see both sides. And I think it's probably very important that it is easily seen from an interior street. But at the same time, I think from our main public roads, that yes, we need to keep the view shed. And what we may want to do is even do a under-stirred buffer adjacent to public exterior roads rather than, but still allow it to be in the front near interior roads.
You could have it at the front of the subdivision, but still protect...
Right, so that way people are seeing it when they come to the subdivision, but yet everybody in the exterior is not seeing it and preserve the rural view shed. So I think there ought to be a way that we can make that work.
That's, you guys can look, yeah?
Sure.
Okay. Okay.
Time to talk equine.
Yeah, of course. Okay.
All right, yes.
City?
Respectfully, I'm going to read the next three into the record as they intertwine and relate to each other, the next three equine.
Do we have, do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir. Discussion of RZ 15-07, Chapter 64, Article 6, Division 2, AG1 District, to amend the permitted uses to include equine garment fabrication. Discussion of RZ 15-08, Section 64-1811, to delete the equine garment fabrication use permit. And finally, discussion of RZ 15-09, Section 64-1, Definitions, to create a definition for equine garment fabrication. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, these three, as our city clerk said, are interrelated. The first one, RZ 1507, essentially establishes an equine garment fabrication use within the AG1 zone. The second text amendment, RZ 15-08, deletes the use permit for equine garment fabrication. The assumption being that if it's an allowed use, it no longer needs a use permit. And then the third one, RZ 15-09, establishes a definition for equine garment fabrication. So it defines the allowed use under the AG1 zone. And that essentially are the three modifications to the zoning ordinance.
Okay, I'll open this up. Questions? Rick? Rick, go ahead, buddy.
So Kathy?
Okay, Joe, go ahead. Whoever else wants to go.
We were all stopping on it and everybody was unwilling to move, so I thought I'd go.
No, I heard Rick first and I said, Rick, sorry.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Never mind.
Well, go ahead, Rick.
You started talking.
No, I'm already, slap me on the hand.
If I might...
This is why we let the chair pick.
If I could have an opportunity, I should, in all fairness, reach you with the planning commission, how they weighed in on this.
Well, that, that, yeah, and that was the question is, did you, with your definition, the definition that you came up, does it address the concerns that they had about the noxious use of tanneries and whatever? The redefinition, does it kind of eliminate the concerns they raised?
Yeah, well, with your permission, let me read the planning commission and then I'll read that, the definition, to see if indeed you think it has or not. The planning commission at the March 25 meeting unanimously recommended that all of the three proposed text amendments related to equine garment fabrication be denied. It was the opinion of the planning commission that equine garment fabrication remain as a use permit and not be permitted by right under the AG1 district. They expressed their concern that proposed amendments would allow noxious uses such as tanneries and retail shops that sold unrelated items on the premises. The planning commission also stated that text amendment should not be initiated just for one or two situations. Now, let me go to the definition, which I do have here somewhere. The definition that we came up with reads as follows. Equine garment fabrication means the fabrication, wholesale distribution and retail sale of blankets, saddles, halters and other similar garments utilized by the equine family of animals. You should also note that we are limiting this use to no more than, is it, Robin, help me, is it?
2,000.
So it's a very small operation that we would allow by right with that definition in terms of what, how we defined the operation.
Rick?
Is, is there a current definition of equine garment fabrication?
No, no, there is not. So we had to establish one.
And it basically was mirroring what, there was already, there was kind of a definition within the use permit. So if you looked at the, the struck-out equine garment fabrication use permit, you can see the first line is really said limited to the fabrication and wholesale distribution of blankets, saddles, halters and other similar garments. And then we just kind of tweaked it a little bit. So it basically was a description more so than a standard of the use.
Karen?
I'm not sure what's more in keeping with the rural character of the area than equine garment fabrication use. So I, I guess, to me, I don't really understand where the planning commission was coming from. To me, I mean, if you really want rural character, this is the kind of thing you want to have on the side of the road. So, I mean, you know, I know we have to be careful that we don't have a 10,000-square-foot warehouse that says it does this or something, but, and I think we've taken care of that with the 2,000-square-foot, you know, limit. But to me, this is kind of rural character.
I'd agree with that.
And I guess as a follow-up, so you defined it, but this is the definition that the planning commission still said, we don't think, we still think this allows for noxious uses and tanneries and whatever, even with this restricted definition of what the cloth and... So you can't do tanneries and some of the other things, that's not included, that's excluded.
And if you specifically excluded some of those, like we have in the past on zoning, you know, no gas stations or drive-through windows and this, that or the other, does that, can you, can you specifically exclude some of those types of things?
Can we do that, Robin, or if it's not excluded, I mean, if it's not mentioned, is it automatically excluded? Is that, maybe Paul can respond to that.
I mean, there's, there are times when that's the case. It's not always, it depends on how the rest of the definition is worded in this case. I mean, I don't see how you would bring that, I mean, for example, a tannery. I don't really see how that falls into this. But, you know, I don't know the industry well enough to know what all is captured by fabrication of saddle or halter. It seems to me it would exclude it, but if, if you were to want to specifically exclude something, you would say this definition does not include X, Y or Z. I mean, it can be done, absolutely.
But right now, with the definition that you have, you're pretty specific saying this is all that it includes, including, because I see the other concern is that, you know, the tanneries and retail shops that sold unrelated items on the premises, which is kind of broad. But I think by the definition, you're narrowing it down to say, this is what we're allowing without getting a use permit, it's specifically these items.
Correct. And then the other item, as Karen mentioned as well, is that we're eliminating it to 2,000 square feet. This is not a large warehouse or a large retail store.
Bill?
I think it's, you bring up the point, Rick, about tanneries. And tanneries are the originators of the noxious fumes. And I think that's what may have motivated the planning commission to deny all of the changes. But all of the other uses they're making of saddles and, and halters and bridles and everything like that are, are manufactured from the finish of the tannery, tanning process.
Yeah, I think that, that people would already have the leather on hand to create the saddles and the halters and all those things. I just...
I don't think a 2,000-square-foot structure is probably big enough to do and promote an operation like tanning anyways. Although my great-great-great-grandfather was a tanner in a bar.
Matt?
Yeah, Bill stole my thunder. So I, I like the idea as far as it goes. I mean, obviously, if we're going to have equestrian facilities here, I can see easily them having equipment like this for sale with all kinds of stamped leather or, or fancy designs or, or just, just artistic things that people can buy as well and just would even enhance the, the equine culture within the city of Milton. So I'm not as concerned about someone actually tanning stuff on the premises as I am of them actually making something that I think the community can be proud of and buy and sell within the area among the equestrian community. And I think that would be a, a good thing.
Anybody else?
All right, and that was, compassed our last, I don't... I do want to formally leave tonight. Obviously, I'm sure most of you guys have heard, but unfortunately, one of our sister cities, Sandy Springs, our first and long-running mayor, Eva Columbus, passed away yesterday. So anyways, for the city and family and all, we're in our socks and prayers, so.
And the truth of the matter is, we probably wouldn't be a city ourselves if Eva had not fought for cityhood for Sandy Springs for so long. So I think all of us ought to be very thankful for her relentless diligence in making Sandy, getting Sandy Springs cityhood so that the rest of us could really have a very easy door to walk through.
Okay, enough to conclude our work session.